Yes, there one, two.
You know, that's what I had when I had the baby. That wasn't bad, the epidural. Epidural was not bad.
I had epidural. It could kind of feel. Good.
We try. Been a long week. And it's just what, Tuesday? It's gotta be sometime in August.
We'll call the Appomattox Town Council. They workshop to order. First on their agenda, we're at a public hearing, uh, two items. First, pub- purpose of the, this public hearing will be to provide an opportunity to hear public comments on proposed changes to the water and sewer policy user charges, including water and sewer rates, connection and availability administrative policy with an effective date of July 1, 2023. Have any public presentations at this time? In our packet, we have, uh, items, page four, specifically the rates for the next five fiscal years. Proposed increases. Having no public comment. We'll adjourn that public hearing and move on to the next. Public hearing, purpose of this public hearing will be to receive public comments concerning the proposed FY 2024 budget for the town of Appomattox. We've worked long and hard attempting to complete our FY 2024 budget. Any comments from council?
Just remember, when did we vote to make it so?
Is there a vote tonight for that, Roxanne, or is it next meeting?
No, it has to lay over seven days between the public hearing and the vote. So it'll be at the June 12th, I believe, council meeting. Make sure I get the right. Yes, June 12th.
June 12th is when we vote on.
You are able to vote on, if you wish, I put it on the agenda for tonight. The consideration to adopt the utility water and sewer rates effective billing date of July 1st so that we can notify the customers sooner.
Taking a very long and hard look at the budget this year. And got everything we could get out of it. We'll close the public hearing for the FY 2024 town of Appomattox budget. Next item of business is closed session. I'd entertain a motion to, that the board convene a closed session for consultation with legal counsel to discuss potential acquisition by the town of certain water infrastructure and assets from Appomattox County pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8. Entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Okay, so we request that Jeff remain in, with us in closed session.
By roll call vote, Claudia?
Yes.
Nathan?
Yes.
Timmy? Mary Lou?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
I vote six to nothing. We will now enter closed session. Mr. Mr. Allen, would you please remain?
What's next?
Roxanne?
If you give recess for comments, okay.
Ms. Kestrel?
We'll need a motion in a second for the following certification. To the best of each member's knowledge, the only subjects just discussed or considered in the preceding closed meeting were those lawfully exempted from the FOIA Act's open meeting requirements and properly identified in the motion that convened the closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23712D.
Entertain such a motion. Motion made, properly seconded. Any further discussion? By roll call vote, Ms. Bucket?
Yes.
Mr. Simpson?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Spiegel?
Yes.
Mr. Boyce? Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Dynamic vote, motion carries.
Mayor, could we recess for five minutes?
We will recess for five minutes. Stand and recess. Making seven.
Is that okay? Okay, yeah, probably at the next, maybe by the next.
Remind everybody to make sure your mics are on. We're gonna reconvene the meeting. Uh, next item on the agenda is consideration to adopt the utility water and sewer rate structure attached with an effective billing date of July 1st, 2023.
I'll second.
Motion made and properly seconded. Any discussion?
And I think we have discussed this at length in the past. And this is a water study which was produced by Hurt and Profit for us. And I, and we in the past have said this is just what we need to do.
Well, but badly we hate to do it. I think we all know that we, we've got to do this in order to keep things afloat.
And remain in the black.
Yes.
No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? As having the motion carries. Council comments. Well, as the mayor, I do want to make one comment. My daughter graduated. We have another 157 citizens that are now graduates of Appomattox County High School. That will be out either furthering the education or looking into the workforce. Part of that, I hope is that everything the town can do to enhance their opportunities moving forward in their lives that will enhance our community in the future. Ms. Bucket? Any comments?
Mr. Jamerson approached me again. And I asked him for money for the museum. And I told him I would again ask if there is anyone interested in revisiting this.
It was my intention to make a motion for that. Uh, you know, there's been emails back and forth about it in the meeting that, um, Mr. McGee and, and Mr. Jamerson had had. And I think in, in my recommendation that I think was sent out too on, on donations, I think we should give everyone a vote who submits an application and, and the way we voted on it, we just kind of voted on them all together, which was my motion. I, I give that. But I would like to see us vote on it tonight. And, and I would make the motion that if anyone else is interested, um, we would give $5,000 to the museum.
Got a motion?
For a one-year, you know, not multiple-year commitment, but just one year.
There a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Anything else, Ms. Bucket?
Um, I guess I should wait till the council standing committee reports to talk about the funds? Talk about funds or the?
That'll be fine. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Your what? Go now?
Simpson.
I mean, not to put you on the spot, Ms. Bucket, but what was your point in bringing that up?
Because I promised Mr. Jamerson I would do that.
Very well. The slate on the train depot looks great. They started putting on the backside of it today. I was very delighted to see that.
It's of the roof or the project?
Roof is 112th.
112th, they just got started.
They are really moving fast.
Yeah.
It's good to hear.
I was kind of fascinated the way they were getting it up to the roof.
Timmy? Mary Lou?
Um, I would just like to, we're, uh, coming forward to Memorial Day weekend again, and I would just like to wish all of our citizens in the town and the county and the surrounding communities a very happy and safe Memorial Day weekend.
Mr. Boyce?
Being a veteran on the group here, envious Memorial Day. Memorial Day is not a throw a picnic, have a party holiday. Memorial Day is the day that we hold our colleagues who made the ultimate sacrifice in memorial. The old saying is all gave some, some gave all. And I think we need to do everything we can to be attentive to the need of the veteran. If there's something that we can do, even ju- just for a moment to brighten that day for the hell that they went through so that we wouldn't have to. I being one of the veterans that just missed Vietnam by one year. So I, I, I was glad I did not have to see that. I did have a son go over to Iraq. I had a nephew in Kuwait. War is not healthy for people in general. But again, my, my thought is for the, for the little kids that don't have a dad that never got back home from the war.
Ms. Allen?
I don't have anything.
Council Standing Committee reports.
I'll go first real quick, but I don't have anything. Tim Angel probably updated on the depot project, so I guess I'll turn it over to finance.
Um, Kim has given me, um, yeah, you probably have the sheet on the ARPA funding and in, we, we have several things that are, are in queue to be paid. The general fund, uh, with 13.5 for the dog project, the kennels and the, what is that of, can you read this thing good?
CHA.
Yeah, CHA, that's for the, um, continuing on the other side, the INI engineering for the installation of the sewer line.
And the, um, 42,000, let me see what that's for. I'm, my eyes are so bad. That's a CHA.
That's for the, um, squad car for the deputies.
Okay. So, um, you know, we're moving along and spending some of this and we'll hopefully be done when, by the, on the, on the right path for when it's, things end where we will have spent. I hope so. I sure do.
And then the, um, we want to mention the GIS maps and the GPS across the top there, the three, um,
Oh, the 14.
Yeah, yes.
The 14,000, uh, when that one ha- has been paid?
No, that was a question from the last meeting whether or not it could be covered under ARPA for the GPS, GIS system.
And those three areas, uh, it can be.
The total of 60,000, yes, that was put into the operating budget in those three apartments, but you were questioning could it be paid for the last time through ARPA?
It can be. So is that, is that everybody's pleasure?
I've added it on the sheet for your approval.
Okay. Anybody have opposition to that?
Mr. Garrett, what's the, uh, status of the, uh, air care unit for the fire department?
It's been ordered ahead and come in here.
Item one?
Yeah, that has been, um, paid for, so I just wanted to make sure.
Should be on the way.
Okay, good.
It's on back order. It's on its way.
Just realize we have 19 months to just make decisions on where this needs to go.
I believe we'll get there.
I sure hope so.
Uh, we'll entertain a motion to reallocate the budgetary monies. Those identified expenses and submit them under the ARPA funding.
I make a motion to do that.
I'll second.
Yes, please.
Any discussion? By roll call vote, Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Ms. Spiegel?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Simpson?
Yes.
Ms. Bucket?
Yes.
By six to oh, the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Bucket. Staff reports. Gotta work out your order with Ms. uh, Kesto each time. We, we'll just go down that. Thank you, Jeff. Ms. Ray?
Um, we've been wanting over the funds for the month of April, we're in the 10th month out of the tail. And that would be 83% of the year. The general fund is at 99% of our budget revenue. And with that being said, um, we're at 77% of operating expenses, so the net revenue that we're showing right now is kind of low, so nothing unusual there. The previous month under the revenue leaders, bank stock is starting to come in now. The bank stock is due us by June 1st. So we're starting to get checks in from the bank. That's the tax, it's a different type of tax. It has a business license, the bank pays the bank shop based on their holdings. It's always due, um, by June 1st. As far as any of the other revenue leaders, you can, right there, yes.
Sorry.
I think, um, everything is running pretty good because that is the level on the left side for the entire year. So keep that in mind and we have two more months to go.
I'm hoping that the indication on cigarette tax means fewer people are smoking.
We only have six more days.
Smoking and vaping.
Lord.
Do we get a tax on vaping?
Next page of the comparison at this time last year, so we can see how it's going along. A lot of the meals tax, a lot of this depends on your gross sales, so if the, the cost is up and the price is up, the meals tax is gonna go up because it's based on the seat. And I would say sales tax is gonna move along the same track because every meals tax ticket, you know, the sales tax will, so. Any comparison, I'm trying to see if we're, well, cigarette tax is higher right now than it was this time last year.
Yes, ma'am.
Personal profit tax, a little bit lower, that, that comes in slowly as people, um, we have the D M P stop, so when they go downstairs and you can't get your tags, they'll come up here and pay personal taxes. That's the only thing, lodge tax, come neck and neck with us kind of year based on last year. Any questions on that?
That's very close.
I know.
Tourism happens.
Over the next two years, two, two months.
Well, it's been hard for people, the situation. It's been hard on people.
And that's why once you keep in mind the volume, the amount we're seeing in meals tax doesn't mean necessarily quality. It's based on the gross sales that they're paying these taxes for. So if the cost of food is up and the retail prices up, it's pushing the tax on the meals out. And as far as the revenue fund, um, right now it's showing, um, that we are 63.6.
One more?
One more.
Oh, the water, okay, sorry, apologize.
I just want to say, you know, we, we're, the rates are starting to equalize a little better. But do keep in mind, um, I think, yeah, we still have some million gallon tanks valve and work to do right. And, and right now we have like 85,000 in the CIP for that. So this is what we're talking about, the, the revenue and expenses when it comes to doing repair and maintenance is where the water plant always teeters right there. So we have some valve work and conditioning to do to the tanks and things. So that's why that rate is starting to help keep up with the maintenance now. Still have anything I need to add to that? Okay, good. Thanks, sir. All right. Just to see where the revenue is going from, sales that we have projected to be 370,000, we're at 352, which is 95% even though we're at 83% of our year's budget. So I, I'll say this again, I think the constant, the slow change in the rate is starting to equal it's out a little bit. And then the split with the out of town rate, I think it's finally bringing that worry in a little closer to make it a little bit closer to be itself again. And then the other revenue and interest, that's a hit or miss, you never know, interest rates are up, so that's interest coming in, that's connections, availability fees, those are just, you never can predict, that's based on construction. So those are all the other things. As far as the sewer fund, the sewer fund we've known has always been a strong refund for us. The, um, the majority of our customers have built the flow, so that's why you see it so close in the revenue. But, um, I do want to comment about that bottom line, that is a little bit, um, we found after we did the budget last year that we have some grant funding that will take care of, one of the expenses is 150,000. So that is why this is looking like it's so ahead of budget.
Wow.
Because, um, yes, the skater system is going to be picked up by some grant money left over from the sewer project.
Yay, and we're allowed to do that, you've got that cleared.
Yes. Right there, we got the skater. So that net revenue is, because I think 150,000.
Honey, you just, that was touched upon at the last meeting, um, but you had to make sure we could.
Right, I think, um, yeah, and we were waiting for, yes, because after we finished the sewer project, we still had the grant funds remaining, and so we were trying to get an approval for other projects dealing with the sewer system so that it gets put out when it needs, so. Definitely ahead of budget now if we don't do it. And again, just like the water plant, it's a break out of where that revenue is coming from. Majority of sales is 86%. And that just shows you how close the sewer is, it's light there, but based on where we should be at this time of year. Then the other revenue and interest is basically other little charges in there for miscellaneous things that never count on, but they're right yet. As far as the cash account? I hope everyone can see that.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna try to make it a little smaller.
That's the checking account at the top, um, ARPA checking, that's the, that one is running a little bit behind, that's based on the April 30th. I try to give you the most updated sheet though when I pass it out for the ARPA fund because I want you to know what it actually is. That's based on April 30th. And the money market, you can see that in red that's restricted, and then the CDs are going to score, so that's still setting up in March 31th. Any questions on that? And the last slide? Okay, every year we have to report on our ARPA funds to the federal government, where we say that has been done and submitted, and we've done it for this year. So our little bit has been spent. We will spend a little grand amount, just department was able to buy trash can liners and they're called pickers? Is that right? Okay, went a little bit over due to shipping, so we just took that out of operating budget, but we were able to use that whole plan now and receive. We had to report that back to the county because that was funding. We had to report that back to the county because that was funding given to us from the county or through the county, excuse me. So, we've already sent everything back. We're done with the litter bank for this year.
Excuse my ignorance. What's a picker?
Grabber, reacher.
You cannot bend over and pick up trash.
In healthcare, we call it a reacher, grabber.
Yeah. Now, I understand the old people term. Don't be doing that to me.
And Mr. Grant, what's the source?
The county of Bosworth, and they use our information and the town.
State, state, county, or table?
At the state, I think the state.
They have, they have to apply for it, but they give it.
They give it to us, I don't know what ratio that happens, but they'll send it over. And we have to use the money and send back the proof and everything before June thirtieth. So, we have followed through with that now. All right, um, we ordered three scanners because we are going to try to go to one paperless. I can't say all on paper.
Near paper.
Okay, that's the word, okay. Near paperless, um, and we're going to try to switch on July the first to, for our AP. So, when we, instead of having a lot of the file cabinets now, we're going to try to switch the paperless on AP. So, we have ordered three scanners to the, for the people who are actually processing a lot of the AP to have it at their desk. So, they're, we're trying to get ready, um. I'll just say, June, July, and part of August, we work in two different years. So, any invoices that we're paying for this year, this current budget, we're going to keep paper so we don't split the process for the auditorium.
And this will be for the town office here, justice?
And justice, yeah. It's all together. So, anything for the new budget, we hope will be paperless. It just keeps it cleaner when the auditorium's going, where, where did we put it? So, so that's what we're going to try to go toward that. So, we ordered three scanners, so we can start that process. And also for ACH payments for AP, um, I think we may have talked about this before, but the bank didn't offer that service. Farmers Bank is now going to offer that service and they came by and met with us, um, or met with me about a week ago. And they are bringing that service in and it's new to them too. So, I'm talking with them and we're trying to figure out how that's going to all work and how we're going to be able to do that. But what they're trying to do is instead of us having to cut so many checks, we will be releasing the file and then they will release it eventually of our, of our, of our, so. So, that's going to cut down on the case of checks. So, that's all I can say right now. This is another journey. Um, we just want to make sure we got that procedure down right because when we release it, we want to make sure everything is in the right place. A little nervous, but we're going to work with it. So, it's new to them, it's new to us, and we're working on it. We're trying to get it ready.
That is impressive.
Yes, it is.
We picked that up from the town of Farmville. Their advantage is in the Edmunds system and they're able to do that. So, I spoke with farmers and they said, "It's funny you ask. We're trying to bring that service now." So, I think we're going to be one of the first, if not the first, to use that business.
From, from farmers.
That's awesome.
Busy sixty days. And I think that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ray. Mr. McGee?
Um, Jeff presented the contract, the Tiger Fuel today, the purchased, uh, property there. Jeff, you want to tell them? Uh, progress on the Train Depot. The back decking is completed. Uh, they have started the entry deck. They're more than halfway done on the entry, um, side of it. And the roofers have separated the roof into six sections. So, they completed pulling the slate off of one of those sections. So, if you've got six sections, take it or put it down. So, that's one twelfth is removed as of today. And, um, they cover it up every night. They are doing their best to only hold the fewest parking spaces. I've been very pleased with the contractor's attention to cleanliness, to be nice in the area. And they have, they really are making a special effort to leave a good impression on the townspeople. Um, we had one point about the lack of parking, you know, in the little railroad parking lot that we lease because her, she thought she owned it, but she didn't. And so, um, we've got, we've got that squared away and that's run along in excellent. So far, wonderful. Nobody's gotten any fines or anything yet. The workers are tied off, so nobody's falling off the roof. That's always a good thing.
Safety's number one.
Um, you know, I mentioned to council that there is an option if you would like to have it painted in the original historic colors. There are about four basic colors that they used. Um, that cost is going to come in, in nineteen to twenty-three thousand. Uh, if you were, want to do that, you know, you're still needing to make a vote on that.
I mean, how soon do you think that will, I mean, when do we have to?
Well, that's going to be the last thing that happens. You know, because we don't want any, any of the construction to impact the painting and stuff. So, that's going to be the last thing that happens. Um, the roofing is going to probably go on for another forty-five days. You know, it, it really will look nice, you know, it's going to have the copper edges, so that'll look really nice. But, you know, by the time we get about halfway through the roof is when we probably ought to start talking about, do we want to do this? The painter is not pressing for an answer right yet, but I know that's going to come up in the next two to three weeks. So, probably by the next meeting, I'll have a better schedule for it. Um, the generator bids were received. We received three bids. Um, the apparent low bidder was really, really low. So, but when we looked at it, they did not include one of the required items. So, I have notified them that they are possibly a non-responsive bidder. Uh, we've given them the notification. They have ten days to basically explain why that they didn't understand correctly or to offer any kind of information. If after that period of time, um, you know, they don't, they don't make the cut, then we can go to the next bidder, which is still lower than anything we received before. So, we got, we got two good options on that. Um, the Cherokee Water Line is still in limbo with D.S. Department of Agriculture. As soon as we can move forward on that, we will.
When, when, when can, do they have, that they given?
They, they still have...
Where the inspectors are going to come? Are they, are there just, which second wave?
Um, well, they still have to finish out their, um, acceptance of the BABA, Buy American, Build American program. And, uh, we're still, um, in all likelihood, they're going to provide us, I think, about five hundred thousand dollars in additional grant funds. Um, and then we may need to get a loan on that. The USDA is working that out and they're still communicating with us on what's next.
Reversion project, revisation project.
Okay. I prepared a letter to send to the urgent care, um, folks. I just sent that to Jeff Garrett this morning. Uh, he just sent me a few minutes ago. He said the letter is good. We've sent it to three of the regional vendors and the top ten urgent care providers, um, they're actually the top ten in the country. So, we'll see if we, if we're going regional and we're going national, uh, you know, and see if we get any responses on that. Uh, one of the things I thought was really interesting, if you look at the area that we would be asking, Appleman is right in the center of a hundred and fifty-six thousand rural, um, people. You know, and we're ten miles closer than Lynchburg and twenty miles, uh, or twenty minutes quicker to get to than Lynchburg and no traffic and congestion. Those were just some of the data points that came up. So, if you look at that...
For the press, we are asking through the, our EDA, uh, we are asking for someone to please open a walk-in urgent care center in our town. We have a great need for that. So, that we already started the process and we're hopeful somebody will bless us with that.
Um, and as you noted, I included, Kim asked some of the local towns about guidelines for, um, local giving to external agencies. And I included that in my update to y'all. If y'all are interested in pursuing that, just please let me know. Um, just, and a final thing, I am tracking everything, all our projects. Um, and the, one of the reasons that I'm tracking that stuff is I want to be sure that we're keeping track of how the ARPA money is spent. So, you know, I'll keep, I'll keep tracking that stuff. And as we get closer, I'll start alerting if we're getting worried about stuff. Uh, but I want, you know, we are tracking, you know, because that's one thing, we won't get any extensions on.
That's right.
So, we have to be ready to deal with what, whatever's there as quickly as possible. That's all I have.
While we're thinking about that, have you heard anything back from the folks that were going to take a look at the building?
They came here today.
Oh, okay.
And, um, they measured half the building and validated that their initial measurements that they had from several years back, uh, was, was not accurate. That's why it took them a lot longer. They, they covered the roof and they covered this level. They have not got to the, they're, Larry's going to come back and take your, right.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely. I'm excited about everything.
Yeah, it's going to be good. All right, Timmy, you're up.
Motion made properly seconded for adjournment. Any discussion? All in favor, sig?
To have a discussion on that.
If anybody would like to see the proposed letter that Jeff had approved, it's right here if you, if you want to see.
And that's, the letter's going out to how many?
Well, it's a total of thirteen.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. Your adjournment. Thank you all.
Thank you so much for coming down.